Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the regularly scheduled October 16th, 2023 City Council meeting. If you would all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. If we could get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Engel?
Here.
Mayor Proten Hagan?
Here.
Mayor Bellinger?
Here.
Thank you. First up on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. Is there anything that we need to pull from the Consent Calendar for consideration? Anybody in the audience? Does anybody entertain a motion?
I'll motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
I'd second that.
We have a motion as second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's five oh. Next up, Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have all of our monthly reports for the month of September, which include the Treasurer's Report, Police Department, Animal Control, Recreation, Development Services, Public Works, Building Department, Water Department, Wastewater Treatment Plant, uh, Treatment Plant. For Item 3H, which is our Water Department, there was a correction made on the staff report, so each of you were provided with an updated version of the report. We also have copies if anybody from the audiences is interested in that, and we will be updating the upload on the agenda as an updated report.
You want to take a minute to review that? Yeah. Was there any other questions specific before the staff starts discussing any updates for us? Who gets to go first tonight?
Go ahead, Jalen.
Okay, I'm ready.
Here we go.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, four items tonight. Jalen French, um, Development and Community Services Manager. So the first item, we've provided a couple of updates on the business license and home occupation, kind of streamlining efforts that we've undertaken. This was first brought before us in June. We provided, um, an update kind of on the next steps in August. So in that time, we have simplified the forms and applications to make it a little more user-friendly, a little easier. We have committed and are largely hitting a three-day review timeframe for both business licenses and HomeOx. Um, we did miss two in the last round. Um, they were four days instead of three, but we are trying everything we can to hit the three-day timeframe. And then, um, the thing I wanted to share with you today is, starting October 1st, we did reduce the home occupation permit fee from $130 to $70. This is largely because we streamlined the review, so less departments are reviewing it. Um, so we felt justified in, um, reducing the overall fee for home occupation permits. So I wanted to share that with you and with the public. Second item today is, um, we did recently re- uh, re-release, excuse me, a call for additional recreational program instructors, providers. We did receive one. Um, we've approved that application. It's for an adult yoga class that will be held weekday nights in the community center. Um, we are final- finalizing the details there and hope to see that open in the next couple of weeks. Third item, we are excited to share that, um, Basketball League registration is open. Um, this is our first year in the Junior NBA League, and we are even more excited to share that we will include four and five-year-olds. If you recall, the Junior NBA League is, um, really for six-to-14-year-olds. This council had a desire to see four- and five-year-olds, um, continue in the program. We are offering that age group. Um, there will be some logistics with the additional years of players, um, the additional court space needed, so we do request and encourage, um, the public and the council to have a little bit of patience with us in this first year, in this transition year. Um, but we are excited to, um, offer this program to the community. And then the fourth item I want to share with you is an update. Um, an item came before you on the September 18th meeting in regards to, um, traffic and Deborah Circle. So we have looked into this thoroughly. We put out the, the radar trailer out there for a two-week period. What we found is, there probably isn't cut-through traffic. The traffic generated was less than would be expected in normal, everyday traffic. So we don't necessarily think a stop sign or anything like that is warranted at this stage, but we'll continue to keep an eye on it. What we have done, though, is, um, through the public works through, we have purchased two signs basically says, "The street is not for through traffic." So we'll post these signs, you know, under the stop sign, I guess.
One will be on a stop sign, one will be on a light pole.
Okay, one on a stop sign, one on a light pole that, you know, tells passerby is that it's not for through traffic. That street is not for through traffic. Um, so we did purch- purchase those signs, and those will go up in the next couple of weeks. And then, again, we'll continue to monitor the situation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chief, do you have any updates?
I don't. You know, I want to update everybody on, good evening, Council on Caltrans. Um, it seems like every time I've came, I've been giving you, we've been getting pushed off, but luckily, they have gotten started in the last week. Um, working in the evenings, they're going through, taking off approximately two inches off of the asphalt now. Um, then they will be going back and, uh, putting that back with restriping. We've had a few phone calls of concerns with, uh, cones being kind of a mess and noises at night, so we're relaying those messages and doing everything we can to minimize that. Uh, but there is, you know, construction going on there, trying to get through as quick as possible so we can beat the weather. So, uh, staying in touch with them every day and we'll make sure they're staying on progress.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, one other little thing is, this weekend, flag football starts, and, um, excited to say that we'll be putting three fields into Hogan instead of two this year, so we'll have more teams playing at one time out there. So, um, looking forward to that. So feel free to come out and check that out and for the following weekends to come. That's all I have for now.
I do have an update.
Okay.
As far as the radar trailer, right now it's on, uh, Escalon Avenue. Uh, we'll be moving that over to St. Louis and Miller like you requested, so we'll do that probably tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, one more thing. Sorry, I told, uh, Mr. Lyle from the School District I'd mentioned this. It is their homecoming game this weekend, um, for the Escalon High School on the 20th. It's the first time anybody's gonna be on the field. They've got some pretty excitement. A little ceremony's going. Um, they've got the actual, uh, American flag from the 49ers Stadium that they've used out there that they're gonna be using on the field. Um, so, hope everybody enjoys that. Pretty, pretty excited for the School District. They've done a great job out there and looking forward to that to continue to happen. So, come out on Friday and support your local football team.
Great.
All right, so I will go ahead and do some updates I have. Um, Request for Proposals went out on our two orchards that we have. It closes on October 26th, and so we did provide that information. Um, as indicated at the last meeting, we mailed it out to surrounding property owners because in the past, we have received interest from neighboring properties on either, you know, cutting wood and/or utilizing the space for their needs, and so any proposals that they want to put in, they can do so. Um, that deadline is, uh, October 26th. Um, a reminder as well that we will be having a second workshop on the housing element at our next scheduled meeting, which is November 6th at 5:30, and that's a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and Council, and so that's at 5:30. And then, I have received an application for parade entry into the Veterans Parade, and so was putting that out there to Council if you'd like to submit vehicle and/or council members to, uh, participate in the parade.
Thoughts?
It's up to you.
Is your truck available?
Truck's available. I'm pretty sure if I didn't show up, there's a certain American Legion person that's gonna have my head if I say no, so I'm already in.
So should we go ahead and just, well, go ahead and enter Mayor Bellinger's truck? And the mayor in there?
Mayor and Council for those that can make it.
Parade will start at 10:30 a.m., and the lineup's gonna start at nine, and so...
Nine, okay.
Be out there with some type of identification so they can find you. So I'll go ahead and submit your vehicle?
Okay.
Uh, for Council.
Is there candy at this parade?
If there's a parade, there's candy.
I think we always get asked that. There always ends up being candy, yes.
This one, this one's on a Saturday, so there might be a few more little ones out there than a normal Tuesday afternoon parade or Tuesday morning parade.
Not sure what day, what day is it this year?
Saturday.
Saturday. So Saturday, November 11th. I'll go ahead and, and enter that, and then just let me know if you have any questions as we come up to that date. I could send a reminder email out as well. That way you have the information.
All right.
And that's all I have.
That's all you have? All right. Any other questions here of our staff? If not, we will move to Matters Presented from the Audience.
Just a...
Go ahead.
Real quick, is there any update on the Main Street Park update? Um, with the, with the walking trail and the bike path?
Uh, do you have any updates on that? I'm kind of thinking of where we left off.
It's still in design.
Okay.
Um, we're thinking it's gonna get under construction early next year.
Okay.
Um, we've added a few elements to the park, which I think will be exciting, that we're not quite ready to share yet, but they're, they're in design and, and bid should go out in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Matters Presented from the Audience. The public may address the City Council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the City Council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record. However, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is the discretionary decision made by the mayor. At that point, we'll go ahead and open it up to anybody here in the chamber that would like to come to the podium and speak.
Good evening. Sherri Hill, Sacramento Street. Um, I'm coming tonight before you on behalf of Escalon Strong and the food distribution. Um, it's gonna be an item that we will bring before you at another council meeting, but I wanted to give you a little bit of background so that you could at least consider it and think about it before it becomes before you, and that is the use of the community center. And, um, I know that the senior room would be available, but Karen is also who does the lunches Tuesdays and Thursdays is working with us, and, um, I'm gonna pick on Justin here. I've had him down there. Um, we did a dry run to see the, if we could use the foyer. So basically, what I'm asking you is if you would consider allowing us to use just the foyer so that we stay out of the senior room, and then we don't have to disturb the senior room or any of their projects. Um, Karen thought it was a good idea. We've been, we've been working with her. She actually works with us for food distributions on Thursdays. The idea is to set up a horseshoe of tables in the foyer, and then people can come in one door and stay on this side of the table and go out the other door with their food. They don't enter into the big community room. They don't enter into the senior room. They just come and collect their food in and out, and it's an easy cleanup, easier setup, easier takedown. Um, it's a lot less hassle, and then we don't mess with the seniors. And then, just in case there is a conflict, or say somebody has the, uh, big room, and they want the foyer in the big room on a Thursday, then Karen will work with us, and we will make it happen. We will, you know, we'll cover up the senior things and, and we will make that work. But it's not as easy, and it's a little more difficult, and the in-and-out ease of it, um, you can ask Justin if you think, he thinks that might work, and, you know, let him give you his opinion. Um, but I'm just gonna ask you to consider it. We're gonna bring it before you, hopefully next time, next council member, but, I mean, next council meeting, so hopefully you'll think about that, and it makes it very easy. People can come right into the foyer, go around, get their food, go right out. Easy in, easy out. So, thanks for considering.
Thank you. Anybody else?
While you're talking about the, uh, basketball and the NBA, uh, thought crossed my mind too, where you used to have to address the pool issue at the last minute. Is someone working toward getting that pool open for this summer now rather than too late?
Good evening, Council. Cameron Deroussi, Arthur Road. I'm here for, uh, Deroussi Group. Dominique brought up the, uh, the two pieces of land that you guys are offering out, uh, right now for lease. The one I want to talk about is 1717341 Escalon Balota. It is a 19-acre piece, um, and we have the property. It's a one-acre parcel. There's a house and three rental properties on it. It's a one-acre piece. We want to expand the house out, well, the lot of the house, out eight acres, um, into that Escalon Balota property. What that would do is, we would, we would purchase that, and it would leave the house on that Escalon Balota piece, and there's a canal, or like a little drainage ditch, and we'd want to draw a straight line, so it would actually make it all square, squared up for you guys. And we would want to purchase the eight acres. Uh, we can pay $240,000 for the eight acres. Any questions?
No questions from me.
No questions. Can I move to annex the piece?
Uh, no, that's not how this works. That's not the way this works.
Okay.
This, this property is currently up for a short-term lease.
Okay.
I know that. Um, this would be a whole process. We'd have to surplus land act that. I'm not in favor of that. I'm not interested in myself in getting rid of eight acres to sell. It should be to develop for park in the future, but...
Sure.
That being said, if we open it up, you wouldn't be the first one or the only one to be able to bid on that property.
Of course.
That opens up to an awful lot of other opportunities for people that we don't want in our town, being low-income housing controlled by the state or the county.
Right. So this would...
So there's a big, there's a big risk in opening it up for sale, in my opinion.
Okay. This would be overflow parking, so if you can see, my dad has turned the entire backyard, beautiful one-acre backyard, and he turned it all into parking for the employees. So there's also a lot of trucks that get stranded on the side of Arthur Road, and even that one corner piece that, when we have football games, a lot of people park on, he's even had trucks all the way down there. So, we have 25 trucks stranded. It doesn't look good. So if we could buy that piece and use it for overflow parking, that would be the idea. In the first eight acres, so we'd leave you guys 11 acres plus the, uh, the house. Move it for the next meeting?
I'm not in favor of that. I don't know about anybody else, but...
So we have the Request for Proposals out right now, um, and that closes October 26th. So if you have a proposal, go ahead and submit it. Anything that's submitted during that proposal period, I mean, as staff, we'll go ahead and bring that before Council and, and any options that are provided. And so we'll share them with all of you guys, and we'll discuss moving forward whatever Council agrees on.
Then, uh, Mr. Bellinger, is there a reason why you wouldn't be in favor of it?
My brief answer is that that land is designated for park and recreation for the community.
Okay.
Once it's gone, we can't get it back, and honestly, your offer is not worth to the city, in my opinion. That little amount of money doesn't move the needle for our budget in any way, shape, or form.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't do anything. It's short-term, one-time money.
Okay.
Land that's last that we can use for parks is forever.
Understood. So how many acres is your expansion project?
Can't really get into back and forth on that.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. So, okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Just because he addressed that, um, be aware that under the current housing legislation in the state of California, if you open up that land, you have to give it to the state first. They have first dibs. They've passed those laws. So, keep that in mind. And that means low housing, that means Section 8, that means all of that, and you couldn't stop them once you open that door.
Anybody else? Is there anybody online that would like to, uh, speak? Matters Presented from the Audience. You have anybody online?
See any hands?
All right, we'll go ahead and close Matters Presented from the Audience. Move on to Administrative Matters. Number four, Consider the Term of Recreation, Commissioner Beaman pursuant to Escalon Municipal Code. Who's got this one?
That's me.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, not, not much to this item. Um, as you, as you read, it is, uh, to consider the term of Commissioner Beaman. Um, these are not items we, we like to bring forward. Um, but we are placing additional sort of, um, I don't know, we want, we're trying to bring more prominence to the Recreation Commission, bring more items forward. Um, and what would be beneficial to the community is if we had a full commission. Um, we did see some interest in an item we'll talk about next with, um, four applicants for the Recreation Commission. And so, we have been looking at, um, the attendance records of, of some of the commissioners, and, um, unfortunately, Commissioner Beaman's attendance record is, is not ideal in this case. And so we'd like to bring forward, um, per Escalon Municipal Code, Section 2.17030, um, a member who fails without permission to attend three successive meetings of the commission is subject to removal. Um, earlier this year, January, February, and March meetings were missed without notification. We've since reached out numerous, um, times via phone, via email, and, and just have not heard word, one way or the other, if there's continued interest in the commission or not. Um, so we wanted to bring this item forward for the council's consideration in light of, and, um, really reacting to the next item, um, which is setting a date and time for Recreation Commission, uh, interviews. So I'll be happy to answer any questions we have.
Jalen, when was the last time, um, Commissioner Beaman attended a meeting?
I think it was the, let's see, we're in October. I think it was the August meeting. There's two meetings, July and August, um, that Mr. Beaman was there, but the last two have been missed, and then three or four before that were missed.
How long has he been in the position in the last term? He's not up for renewal, obviously, at this point. So his term's been going on for two, two and a half years at this point, you know, four-year term?
This, uh, yeah, he's not up. His term is not up. He's been on the commission for about five years. Um, and the attendance record is, uh, 13 missed meetings out of 25.
Is it, you're understanding there's not, this isn't a health, this is a health issue either, right? This is just him not showing up, or you're not sure?
Honestly, can't tell. When I first came into the position, I reached out and, and didn't hear, and, and we've reached out subsequently in quorum calls and quorum emails and, and have not heard. So I don't know if it's health or, or otherwise.
We've made attempts to try to contact him via phone or email, and no response?
Yeah, numerous times in, in both those methods that you, um, mentioned, phone and email. Quorum, uh, quorum checks. That means who's gonna attend the meetings, and then outside of that, we've, we've tried to reach out as well.
Well, um, you know, Mr. Beaman obviously is a well-respected member of our community. Um, so, I hate having to say this, but, uh, you know, accountability is important, and missing over half the meetings is, in my opinion, not really showing up to, showing up to the game, so to speak. Um, but that's just my opinion.
Are we combining, we're not, are we combining this with the other item?
No, no.
Just on its own?
Just giving it context.
Okay. Um, any other thoughts over here? Anybody? I'm a little concerned with the attendance record. That's concerning to me. Missing over half in the last, give or take, two years is concerning. Without communication in recent months is more concerning. I'm concerned for his health. If it's a health issue, I don't want that to be a reason. Hopefully, he's not ill or anything like that. Yes, the question is...
Is this just open for discussion, or are we able to motion? Is there, what are, what are we looking at?
We can, I would think we can motion.
We're putting that before Council to make that decision.
We can bring a motion if we would like to possibly put that position in the pool with the next go-around if we so chose.
Yeah, I would, I would go ahead.
I believe that's an option as well.
Yeah, I would go ahead and motion to remove, um, Commissioner Beaman.
Yeah, we have a motion to remove Commissioner Beaman. Is there a second to that motion?
As much as I don't want to say it, I, I would say the same.
All right.
Make sure to open it to public.
Ah, before we do anything, open to the public. Anybody have any comments on the item, on Commissioner Beaman's position? Anybody online? Just check so we hit all the spots. Nope, all right. So we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor? Aye, aye. As opposed? Moves five zero. Thank you. Uh, Mr. French, I believe you're up for number five.
Yes, number five. So we do sympathize with the council on that, that item. Not, not an easy item to, to bring before the council. Um, item five, there are two Recreation Commission vacancies that do expire next month. Um, these are terms that are naturally expiring per City Council policy. It is the policy to open it up, um, for recruitment each time a, a term is expiring. So that is what we have done. Um, we opened it up on September 22nd, and that ended on October 3rd. And as I mentioned, we did receive four applications. Um, one of the terms is for the outside of, you know, the city, um, seat. The other is for inside of the city. Um, the first step per the City Council's policy is to set a date and time for the interviews. Um, so we're bringing that item before you for your consideration to consider when, um, to hold those interviews.
So just to be clear on the process, we're gonna do like we've done in the positions where we hold interviews and we make the decision that night? Is that our plan, I would assume?
That's at your decision. As a part of the policy, you can schedule the date, and then if you wanted more time, as long as the council agrees, you could either vote that night or schedule a separate meeting for appointment.
Okay.
Either one is fine.
How does our agenda look for, uh, early November?
Well, that is... Three, one. That's three weeks away, so I don't have any guarantees for you. But, I mean, if we, we do, we are starting, we have a joint meeting that night at 5:30, and so that's when the 5:30 Planning Commission meeting is. Um, if you want to incorporate it as a part of the, of the actual regular agenda, that would be fine as well. Um...
Will there be a rec-commission meeting in November?
Be on the 8th?
We don't have any items yet that I'm aware of, so to be determined.
So that, would this be for three positions then? Three terms?
I, I think that is also up to, to your discretion, but with the removal in the last item of the commissioner, I would, I would say yes. That would, would make logical sense to open up the three positions, the two expiring terms, and then the other.
And I would think if we're gonna be doing the replacement of Commissioner Beaman, we would, in my opinion, instead of making it a short term until the next election's up, just switch this one to three positions, so they're full terms, so we're not doing elections again and again. That make, you know, kind of going with that. Seems like we're right at an election point, if you will, or appointment point in the process. If we appoint replacement for a full four-year term, then the next one would just be two, which two and three is what we're doing anyways. I would think we'd do that instead of just a replacement for two years of that term, or the remainder of his term. Are we allowed to do that?
We, 'cause he'll have another term of two years. What he's saying, just swap it on to the next schedule with the other commissioners, but I don't think we can do that, correct?
I hope you guys...
Yeah, they'll have to go out with the remainder term.
We'll have to finish the remainder, and then, okay.
Yeah, it'll keep them on the 3-2 schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, then as council, there are four applicants. How do we decide who's the two-year and who's the four-year?
So that'll be a part of the staff report. Um, it happened with us at the last Planning Commission appointment where we had a seat that, one seat that was longer term than the other, and so we pointed that out during the application when we were appointing, uh, planning commissioners. One seat was, I think, a year and a half, and the other one was, I want to say, three years or something like that. And so, we'll just identify those seats for you, 'cause you'll also have an identification where one of the seats is for 95320, the school district boundary, and the other two seats, uh, would be for in-city limits. 'Cause the rec-commission is our one commission that allows for two seats to be seated by somebody outside of city limits because we're in that district for the school.
This, this is definitely gonna create a quorum issue if we have a meeting in November, right? If we don't vote at the next meeting?
No, so then unless they're replaced, they, until we've made a decision, existing...
Just stay, okay.
Members of the commission would still be on there.
Yeah, there's still four.
Once a month.
Oh, yeah, you're right. There's four.
I think that'd still be enough.
You're right.
There's no... There's no replacement at that point, so they would show.
And they only meet once a month too, so if they're not meeting till November, they won't meet until the first week of December, and you'd still have a second meeting on the 20th that would be available if needed.
I almost say with the housing element, we move it to the second meeting in November. That would make the most sense, right?
I would agree. I would think that because we opened a third position, that we should probably send that back out for advertisement as well, just to make the public aware.
If there's any more interest? I wouldn't be opposed to that idea.
Move it to the sixth, the second meeting in November?
Second meeting in November. Give them what's, is the... Give them till like November 3rd or something, that's three weeks. And that gives us time to get those applications in until the 20th meeting, that's plenty of time. We open it up and go till the 3rd of November?
That's plenty of time.
Makes sense.
If there's any more interest out in our community to pick up that extra seat on top of the other four candidates we currently have.
Anything stick out to you on that, Jalen? Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, again, discretion of the council, timing, I think, is fine. The terms expire kind of end of the month, so there's no issue there. We, if we have a meeting in November, we'll, we have a chance at a quorum since we have four members. So no issue from staff standpoint.
Okay. So is there any direction, any motion on that?
Go ahead and give us a motion.
So I guess we need, I'll make a motion that we open up application window between now and November 3rd for the additional position vacating by Commissioner Beaman. And set the date of the appointment and interview process to be the second meeting of November.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Here's five, oh. Item number six. Discuss and provide direction on the agenda item request from Danny Fox proposing the renaming of Brentwood Park in recognition of Bob and Dean Elise's staff.
Thank you. So you may recall at the last meeting that we received this agenda item request from Danny Fox regarding this item proposing the renaming of Brentwood Park in recognition of Bob and Dean Elise. Mr. Fox did call me earlier today and advised that he was going to attend remotely. And so I do have some calls on here. I'm going to ask and see if he's there. Danny Fox, are you on the go-to line? These calls don't have names on them, and so I'm not sure. Um, so... I'm sorry. He has to be able on yours. This one, it'll give you an echo. Okay, so it doesn't appear I'm having a response. It might mean that he wasn't able to come in. With that, do you want me to go ahead and continue this item to the next meeting?
I'm okay with that. Everybody else? We're good with that? Sounds like you have consensus on that.
Check my email real quick because he did call.
Mr. Mayor, could I, I know you had consensus. Could I ask to have that moved to the second meeting in November as we'll have an extremely long night the first week in November?
I would be okay with that. I would be amenable to that. Everybody else? I think there's no burning rush to do it, as long as it's on the agenda and we keep our eyes on it. Let's move that to the second meeting.
Okay, second meeting, so we will continue this item to the 11:20 meeting. I'm hearing some...
Catch Councilman Engel, appreciate that.
Okay, we'll continue this to the 11:20 meeting.
All right. Well, that moves us on to item seven then. Discuss the wastewater treatment plant upgrade design cost.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just move on to this item here. So this item was also, at the last meeting, asked to be put on the agenda. And so we've listed on there, I know in the past we've sent out some information that's been requested at council. And so this is just putting it on the agenda for council discussion and then any direction that you would provide to staff.
So Mr. Mayor, I was the one that requested that we add this to the agenda. And I appreciate everything that staff, Justin, and Tom, and the Blackwater team have put together so far. However, I have some major, major concerns. And the major concerns are that when this item was presented to council at the November 1st, 2021 meeting, what was presented, actually, in 2019 it was presented, that option 2B that the council at that time selected was the most cost-efficient and the, everything that we would need for the upgrades. And that cost was $16.3 million. And then the Blackwater contract was issued in, at the November 1st, 2021 council meeting. And at that meeting, Kurt Danzinger asked then-Finance Director Claire, forget Claire's last name, but if the costs for the design were going to be shared between industry and the city. Because what was presented as alternate 2B had a shared cost at $16.3 million. The city was responsible for 27%. Eckert was responsible for 16%. And Escalon Premier Foods, i.e. Heinz Craft, was responsible for 57% of that shared cost. And so Blackwater and city staff, Justin and Tom, worked together through this design process. And we heard most recently that the anticipated costs for this project have gone from $16.3 million to $40 million, which is huge. It's more than almost triple as far as what was presented to council at that time. With zero commitment whatsoever from Eckert or Heinz Craft. My concern is that, and right now where we're at is we have 90% design, we have 90% of the design completed. Again, with zero commitment from Heinz Craft and Eckert. $40 million, if the project is $40 million, the city's share would be, go from 4.4 million to 10.8 million. Eckert's costs go from 2.194 million to 6.4 million. And our friends at Heinz Craft, their costs go from 8.3 million to 22.8 million. And so that's concerning, that's very concerning. Because without any commitment whatsoever from industry, the city so far has spent, as of the last bill that we received from Blackwater, we have spent $598,683 in design costs. Again, with no commitment from industry. Out of $1.2 million for design, that's 50% of their contract value. If we continue down this path, I feel we're in trouble. Because the industry could say, "Sorry, we're not interested in spending $31 million of your project costs," which then would require extensive redesign costs by Blackwater and Tom and Justin. And so I wanted to bring this up to discuss with the council. But, and I'm not saying that staff, Justin and Tom and the folks at Blackwater have done anything wrong or malicious. But as the governing body of the city of Escalon, we need a firm commitment from the industry that they're in, in writing. Because at the end of the day, these are taxpayer dollars. And even if you take the $16.3 million that was presented in the master plan and a conservative, or overly conservative escalation factor of 30%, that still doesn't equal $40 million. So it's open for discussion. I mean, just my thoughts. But I would recommend too that we, as the governing board body, pause the design for this project until we get a firm commitment from Heinz Craft and Eckert. But I'd like to hear what other council members feel about this issue.
Can I ask a question? What's your take on this, Justin, or as far as public works is concerned? And Tom, do you feel comfortable putting, is this something we can put on pause and potentially do some sort of like renegotiation process? Or figure out some game plan, or is that...
Well, that's kind of geared, I mean, that's kind of the process we're in now. I mean, not to say that it's a pause, we're not pausing, but we're in a spot to the point to where we are in discussions with the industries. And I just want the industries, if they're listening, to know that just because we don't have their signature, the reason why they don't have their signature and they're saying, "Yes, we'll do that," is because we haven't presented them saying, "This is what the final number is going to be, this is what you're responsible for." Tom, Blackwater, and myself, we're still in the design frame that we have hopes that it may not be as big numbers as it is currently now because of the relationship we have with the state, which I can't go into detail about. We definitely have 100% cooperation with the industries. They're very much willing to meet. They're really part of our team in discussions on what can be done and what not can be done because we want to be supportive with the local business. But we also understand that they're going to have to pay their part, and they do as well. But the last thing we want to do is just go on with a massive number. The reason the 40 million is there is because we're designing the plant right now to be the best plant it can be and to have everything it can have to a certain point for now and to the future. That may not be 100% necessary without going into detail, but we have a meeting here in the next few weeks with the industries as well, with the industries with the state. Blackwater has some interviews that are going to be going to the industries to help talk to industries about what they can do on their side to help with the design phase. So putting on a pause would just kind of hinder the process we're in now. I totally understand as far as the governing body, you're here for the finances and $40 million is excessive. And that's one of the reasons why this has gone so long is because Tom and I and Blackwater 3 are trying to have that not be the number. I'm confident in to say that when I do bring something to you in a final number, that we've done everything we could possible to get that number down lower, which I feel confident that we should be able to. But at this time, we have so many people putting their hands into it. We're just trying to answer questions as we go, but we can't, we're not quite done yet. We're still working as a team to get everything finalized. Our plant is running good. The state is not on it saying, "You have to get it done tomorrow, we're fine." We're in the process, we're showing good faith and doing things. If we put a thing, a pause on this, I don't think the state would be too happy with that. And then they may be harder on coming down on us to make things quicker rather than in the process we're in now, if that kind of makes sense.
Justin, didn't you say that, I mean, we're on the state's good side, right?
Very much, yeah.
And you and Tom have done a lot of hard work to get us to that point where the items that they noted in the cease and desist order, I mean, it's a non-issue now, correct?
They're non-issue as far as we are taking care of those, but the non-issues also need to have a permanent fix. We have a temporary fix where we don't have any issues, but we need to put a permanent fix on those. More of a maintenance-type thing on the issues of the NOV that have, in the assistance order that we have now.
They have not lifted our cease and desist, then, have they not?
No, they have not.
They have not, okay.
So is there a real, sorry, sorry for saying. Is there a realistic time, timeline you're thinking, I guess, for, I mean, I know there's a lot of moving parts.
Sure.
But, because obviously there's needs and there's wants. And, you know, obviously there's things we need to fix so it's running properly and with potential wants down the road as you get revenue. But if we're having something like that, and so you're saying that pausing it in some way is going to hinder that process of getting you to a final number? Is that what you're saying?
To a final number and a final design. Because we have to keep showing to the state, which we're doing now, the progression of us coming up with design into the point to where we're going to be able to get our violations lifted and get our plant to where it needs to be.
Okay, because there's a, there's a new contract coming up, right? Is that right, with Blackwater? Like, are they still in this contract?
Yeah, we're currently still in the contract with Blackwater, yes.
So you're at 90% of where you want to be, is that?
We're 90% of the design.
Design.
But there's still parts, there's, we're not 90% where we want to be, we're 90% of the design.
I guess what I, my concern is, if I'm being completely honest, is, you know, I know you guys are working hard to get to that number. And I just don't want us to get, be put on, you know, put on a hook, so to speak.
So that number goes up.
Yeah, or we somehow get abandoned by the powers that be, so to speak, that are putting, saying that they're going to, I guess, work with us in this. So if there's some way that we can get a contract with them on paper that gives the taxpayers some, you know, understanding that they're legitimately in the game, you know? Because I guess what you do worry is they saying, "Yes, yes, yes," and then at last minute saying, "No." Or, but at the same time not hindering this process to get to an answer. So I don't know what the right decision on that is, other than letting the process go a little bit longer.
I also really think, I mean, it's hard to speculate a yes or no. I mean, I don't want to say that, but I also think if for, for some reason it was no from both industries, I truly don't see it being a long process or a huge design to get to the point to where we need to get the plant up and running to get those lifted as well.
Okay.
We're in the process of the contract with Blackwater right now. When does the, there's a time period on that, right? What's the end time period on that contract where they're anticipating completion if we were not to pause? Do we know what that date is roughly?
Pull it up right now.
And tied together with the second part of this question is, this money is tied to ARPA funds if I recall correctly, and there's a deadline on spend on that, correct?
Correct, that's the end of next year.
And if we exceed that, that money goes away.
The expiration date is 2026 to spend the ARPA funds.
Has to be encumbered by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So in other words, it has to have a line item associated with it by the end of next, end of calendar, end of 24 calendar year. But actually spent out of our coffers by the end of 26.
And out of that $500, roughly $1,000 that was mentioned, how much of that has come from ARPA funds? All of it.
All of the design is...
So at this point, essentially no additional tax burden from the city of Escalon to our residents?
Related to this design, correct? Design and the future rate study.
So this conversation that we're having about it, you know, being burdensome to... It's not.
Not currently.
Not currently. And we should have enough funds to get through the design phase with what's remaining in that account? And a rate study, you said?
And a rate study, yeah. I think we put away $200,000 for a rate study.
With that, actually, there's a reason to put a pause on it.
Right.
What's that?
There was some contract in November, I want to say, or-ish. We talked about it a little while back.
Don't recall, but I could be wrong. I'm bad with, on that one.
Regarding Blackwater?
Yeah.
They're also doing our well number one project. And so you might be confusing the two projects. They're also doing the well project that we just approved an increase in budget for and awarding. We awarded that maybe two meetings ago.
So I'll be honest with you guys, I feel like we're doing this backwards. I, I feel like we're doing this backwards. I feel like we need to identify the funding sources, have a commitment for the funding, and then, once we have that commitment for the funding, then we can complete the design. I'm not asking for the project to stop or to cease. I'm asking, in order to protect our residents, that we have a firm commitment from Heinz Craft and Eckerd. That's what I'm asking for.
Well, it.
It's a cart before the horse without a hard number for me. I don't know how an industry would give you a hard commitment if you tell them it's going to be sixteen million for their share in the final design phase and we finish up and it's eighteen and a half. Well, I mean, that's the concern I've got for not having a solid number for the industries.
It looks like that when this project was, came to council with the project two B, it was proposed that the design and permit process was also the split of city twenty-seven, the sixteen, the fifty-seven. So at this point, we are footing that, that was presented to council and that is how council had accepted it. At this point, we're, we're footing a hundred percent of the bill. So the question is, are we going back and we're going to try and bill them for the rest of that? Or are we just taking in a hundred percent of the design and permit fees? Because that's not what the original assumption was when that came to council. So it was that that was going to be split. At this point, it's not being split and we're just paying the whole thing.
Were, were ARPA funds in play during, during that? Was that part of that initial discussion? So at, at this point, what, what dollars of ours are, are at risk?
Right now, it's.
It's ARPA money.
For design right now.
That's right. So if we were to split that somehow, ARPA money would go away and we just have a less of an obligation to ARPA. There wouldn't be any change in city budget line items anywhere.
No, you'd just be.
Less money of the.
Taking that money.
What we had.
Yeah, doing something else.
I thought there was something to do with why we fronted it and we did it was a level of control, because it's our plant, it's our city, and we wanted to design and not be under a shared agreement with them as far as the design to get what we feel is the best and not have, shall we say, other fingers in the pie of the decision-making on that. That's.
You're, you're exactly right. I don't remember what meeting it was or what the exact details were, but the previous council wanted to be able to have full control of this, design at this part. And I think they were thinking that with ARPA money, that they wanted us to be able to have full control, which we do, but we are still involved in the industries because they're a big part of it. But that, at that, that's one of the reasons why I believe we're funding it, because the, the staff was, or council, excuse me, was adamant about us being a hundred percent control. If it's our money, if they can't say yes, no, it's a matter of us presenting. They tell us if they can do it or not, and that was their thought process.
Right now, they're still in, if you will, still open to the conversations.
They're very much cooperating with us, definitely, yeah.
Good.
So then it looks like we can decide if we wanted to foot the bill. That would be something that we would do and say that, yes, we do want to take control of the design permit process, and we are going to do that, and then split the construction costs with industry, and that's something that we can do. I'm just pointing out that the way that it was approved by council in the first place was this was supposed to be a split bill. But we do have that freedom to take a hundred percent control and a hundred percent liability on that.
Justin, of the forty million roughly, and I don't know if you know this or not, but what, what percentage of that forty million would you attribute? Is it fair to say that it's tied to that fifty-seven percent of that total forty million would be attributable to, well, not fifty-seven, actually, seventy-three percent would be directly attributable to industry? Because I know that, that the current design has percolation ponds for industry and then some for our residents. So is, is it fair to say seventy-three percent of that is all industry?
I would have to honestly add that, because there is domestic and the industrial, industries, and then there's storms. So I, I don't want to say, because I don't know that for sure, but it would be easy enough to figure that out.
A quick question for you.
Yeah.
So if we kept, if we allow the process to continue to get to an answer, how long are we, you guys thinking? I mean, I'm not holding your feet to fire, but are we talking like weeks or months or years or?
Definitely not years. I mean, I think we're more, it's, when you're dealing with the state, probably not weeks, months. I mean, I would hope within the next year, we really have a, a nice final product that we could be comfortable with. But it's hard to say, I'm hoping a lot sooner than that as well. I mean, Blackwater's done a tremendous part of the design, but there's just things we're not, not with happy with the Blackwater's doing, but the way that we're, conversation we're getting from the state, operations that we want to see happen out at the treatment plant. So we're, we're real close. I mean, we're getting to the point to where every few weeks or month, we are meeting with the industries to get more updates. We're meeting with Blackwater, so definitely months rather than year, years.
Because, so fair to say, if we allow this to go a couple more months, is it going to, this is all ARPA-driven? We're, we're not having money out of our pocket?
No, I mean, it's in the contract and the money that, that was a part of the contract is our ARPA funding.
Because my, my, my concern obviously is making sure that we have legitimate buy-in at the, at the end game. But short-term, I guess, is there some way that we can get to the needs we need out there for things to function properly, get off the state radar, get an answer back that is in a realistic number, you think?
I do.
You do, okay. Then, and in order to allow you to get to that number, you need a little more time.
Yes, I do.
That's, I, thank you, that's all I needed.
But my concern is, we're asking our residents now to, we're going to do a rate study and we're going to have to pay a certain, obviously sewer rates will be increased to cover either ten million or forty million. In addition to that, we also have the surface water project that's coming right behind it. Twelve million dollars there. For a town of seventy-eight hundred people, quite frankly, I don't think we can afford it. That's my concern. I don't, even with the rate studies that are going to be proposed. I mean, people are complaining about the water rates and the sewer rates right now. What, what's again, what's going to happen?
I would challenge you to look at the surrounding areas. I've done some research over the last year, and we're still cheaper than every city in the surrounding area. So they're all going up a regular basis as well. I'm not trying to be like everybody else, but at some point in time, we're not going to have running water or be able to flush a toilet if we don't take care of these problems. So somebody's got to do something. And sitting around kicking the can doesn't get it done at this point. We're going to have to do some level of work on this and some level of expense, or else we run into more problems with the state and not having enough water to drink and/or, you know, take it to the plant.
I think that that's why this is important, to make sure that the industries are committed to helping and paying what they can so that we can get, after this, surface water taken care of as well, because I think that's a, a vital project to get done quickly as well. So it's, it's, it's important to get these industries to the buy-in stage where something is in writing that they are going to commit to at least the construction portion of this project.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're so far down this road, I guess, that I'm at the mindset that if we can get to, if a couple months is going to get us an answer, a hard answer kind of thing, where we can then say yea or nay, maybe that is the right thought, you know? Because otherwise, if we stop the process, you're saying we go back on the state radar. Is that correct or no?
Because we won't be in the process of design, yes. And then which state would not be happy with us because we continue to tell them we're in the process?
The, the bigger, the big concern, I guess, what I'm seeing just from the conversation here is that obviously it was an original buy-in from the Eckerd and Craft and, and the industries that looked like a split. At some point, do we decide to go just full control? Or, and just, or do we just decide that as a group and it just wasn't like documented properly? Or, I guess what I'm getting at is, they, their buy-in, is, is that them showing that they're not buying in? Or is that them just waiting for an answer so they can then make a decision? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it makes, and I think they're just waiting for more of a, a solid number so they can take back to their corporates to see. Because, I mean, we just keep in mind, we are currently the industry's dischargers. They have nowhere to discharge without the city. So if they say no to us, they've got some big decisions to make themselves as well.
Gotcha. No, I don't know, as much as I came into this originally thinking maybe we should shut this down, maybe the best answer really is giving a little more time to figure this answer out. Because I, I do see what Sean's saying, but I also, you know, feel like, you know, talking to you and Tom, that you have a pretty good game plan moving forward. So I think, I think that probably wouldn't be a bad thought, maybe, I don't know, in my own opinion, is maybe give it a little more time, see where, see where it goes, but, but not like a crazy amount of time, you know?
Justin, do we know when a hundred percent CDs are anticipated?
When what is?
A hundred percent.
When what is?
A hundred pers-, when.
Percent of what? I don't know. Oh, design plans, I'm sorry. I'm not sure, we could ask Blackwater. I don't know exactly when a hundred percent would be.
We have an answer potentially right here.
Hi, Allison Furia with Blackwater. So in the meetings with the city, the concept was to get us to ninety percent, because we also talked about the potential for phasing the project. But we at least wanted to get a good set of documents together to give us an, an overview of what the whole project would look like. So that's where we are now. And now I, I do believe that the focus of our work is figuring out discussions with industries, the rate study, and also the coordination with the regional board to determine what's really necessary and when, as well as looking at funding options. So something that we've just talked about is looking at grant funding opportunities. So, so that's where the focus is. I'm not, you won't be seeing any large invoices from Blackwater because we're not working on design going any further than the ninety percent right now until the city says we want to go forward.
So if we're not moving forward with a hundred percent design, isn't that essentially kicking the can down the curb to complete the design?
It's waiting to.
Because industry can't give a hard number until a hundred percent design is done. But we're not getting a hundred percent design done. I'm trying to figure out which comes first.
I, I think what he's asking is, when do you get, at what point would you have like guaranteed buy-in from the industry? Like at ninety or they?
I feel like we want, well, the guarantee part is, I guess it's how the city wants to approach it, you know? How, how, but this is the, I think we're at a point in the design, in the, in the project phase where we need to get a pretty good buy-in from the city, that they need to know what's going on. They, they have a cost, a more concrete cost than before, and.
We talking two months, three months, six months, twelve months, eighteen months? I mean, when, when can we as council know when, if industry is on board or not?
Not to interrupt you, Allison, but I think once we get more feedback from the state of them exactly saying yes on this or no on this, then we will be able to know exactly what we have to do to give to the industries.
You think that process is not tomorrow, obviously, but.
Right.
Relatively speaking, like a quarter, two quarters?
I think within the next six months, we should begin a definitive answer of exactly what the state will allow, will not allow us to do.
In that six months, if we move forward, we're, worst case scenario, we're out of ARPA money?
ARPA money does, is not ending until next year. Like Frank was saying, we have to get a line item set before December of twenty, end of twenty-four.
I guess what I mean is we're not spending city funds.
We are not, no.
That's, that's all, sorry.
So explain to the residents how the, this process is going to go with the state. So do we design it, submit it, they review it, provide comments, send it back? Or could we have a meeting with the state and present the ninety percent to them? And they could set, they can review it and say, yeah, we like this, no, we don't like that? And then that will allow staff to have those conversations with industry sooner?
So we have, there are two branches of the regional board that we're dealing with. One is the compliance and reporting. That's, that's the branch that issued the, issues the CDO. And then there's the permitting section, and we're dealing with both sections. The permitting section is what, you would need to get a new permit if you made major renovations to the treatment plant. Sometimes they'll say, they like to issue new waste discharge requirements every ten years. In my, we have submitted documents to the permitting section. It's a report of waste discharge. They have told me explicitly, we do not review design documents. We review this report and we'll prepare a new permit. But this, the contact has said explicitly, we don't review the ninety percent documents. We don't review design. That's not our job. They're just setting the limits to make sure that the waters of the state aren't being degraded. On the, the compliance section, they're looking at the existing permit and seeing whether the, determining whether the agency is meeting the requirements of the existing permit. They, we have submitted previous design documents, but we're kind of in this gray zone. We have meeting with both branches scheduled for later this month to, to help figure out that gray zone so that we have a design that's meeting the compliance section's requirements, but also that will get permitted if needed.
So this is a question for both you and Justin. If we don't pause right now, realistically, you said six months from now, we should revisit this and see where we're at with funding, where we're at with industry? Then, once you have that green light or red light, then you would proceed with a hundred percent?
Any other questions for Allison here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. At this point, if we're done basic discussions up here, let's open it up to the public. Anybody who might have any comments here, the podium is available for anybody who would like to come up and speak for their five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Ballinger, council. I had a whole discussion page here to, to go with you, but it kind of got shot around, you know? All plans with mice and men. You don't know anymore now than you did when you walked in the door. You're, you're looking for a little warm and fuzzy, and you're not asking the right questions. So I'm going to start, and then I'm going to shoot around my document here. What I'd like to do is, for you that haven't seen this all day, to you. After, you're going to have more important questions than you asked tonight. So when I, when I start, when we ask for a pause here, how many of you knew before the presentation from Blackwater on the fifth or whatever in September, that the project was forty million dollars?
I had a rough idea.
I don't, no, I don't think you did. I, I didn't know that, nobody knew that. When, when did we go from the two B plan at sixteen point three million to forty million? When, when did that take place?
Through time.
No, there's, there's a specific reason and a time to that. What was that? These are the questions that should be in your mind. So let's, let's go back to March of twenty nineteen. I addressed the council regarding the city's intention to send out an RFP to obtain bids for a study on expansion and modernization of our wastewater treatment plant. I proposed that industries that have discharge permits to our wastewater treatment plant pay their fair share, as per year, they discharge more waste than the entirety of our domestic waste. In April of twenty nineteen. In April of twenty nineteen, then city manager Tammy Alcantore reported to council that industries would pay forty percent of that study, where the ratepayers would pay sixty percent. Even though that wasn't fair, it was headway against what had always been just a giveaway of city funds. So on May sixteenth, Pace Advanced Water Engineering was approved by council to prepare for Escalon, a wastewater treatment, excuse me, wastewater treatment plant expansion modernization study at a cost of seventy-two thousand dollars. That set the predicate for cost sharing. And at no point do we go backwards, we go forward. So we don't have a commitment, whether the canaries or the industries are going to stay here. It's not a matter of, you know, we're designing our treatment plant. Of course, it's our treatment plant. It's not theirs. We are, we are the greatest gift to those industries that anybody could ever have. They don't have to treat their own waste. They're, they're not treating it properly as it leaves their plant anyway. Comes to our plant and we deal with it. They got to pay their fair share. So I asked for a pause, because you can't design a treatment plant till you know who, what you're treating or who you're going to treat for. The pause isn't to stop work, but it's to say, hold it. Till we get a commitment, we're not going to go any further, and we're, and you guys need to set a deadline. Not, oh, I don't know, maybe a couple of months early next year, no. They have been on board with this since twenty nineteen. They were at the plant with Pace, with Gary Haskin, myself, Robert Swift, Ed Alves. All of the industries were there, Pace was there. And when that expansion study came out and the costs that were shared were produced, they were all aware. And there was, they were at a buy-in point right then, and they should have had a commitment. The, the study listed the influence, the gallons, the total suspended solids, the BODs, the CDOs. And they, Pace split that out by percentages. So the percents that you're reading there are based on their contributions, contributions to our treatment plant. I don't know why we got away from this. Maybe, you know, maybe somebody can explain it. But we need to know what, why is this a better plan at forty million dollars than the plan that your previous city council agreed to, that they wanted? They, they took the presentations, they went to the workshops. You know, you guys haven't been to those things, so, you know, you're getting your warm and fuzzy here, and you shouldn't be warm and fuzzy. When you, when you look at the contract that you have with Blackwater, get it out here.
You got a wrap-up statement, Mr. Danzinger.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, I didn't know whether we were going to have a discussion or a workshop.
It's a discussion, we've got five minutes to come into the podium, sir.
Public works product in this city's history. And, and it's, it's almost flippant, the way it's being handled, and the way we're dealing with it. There's, there's no real control over here. Until you get those industries on board, and they've known about this for over four years, there's no point in, in keep on going. If you're going to go back to where it's just.
I don't think you'd respect our time, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, and your time is up, wrap-up statement. We're quick, I'll give you one more wrap-up statement.
I just hope the city's time is up, and when you go for your rate study, I'm not going to be a supporter. I'm going to be in, somebody against it, because right now you have no indication of why you're going to accept a forty million dollar plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
You're mayor, city council, Robert Granberg. I live at twenty-three, twenty-four Jonathan Court. I've been a resident in Escalon for twenty-four years. And I'm also a former utility manager of managed wastewater plants, water plants. So I kind of know what's going on. And I'm just starting to learn what, what, what you're faced with. And, and I sympathize with the decisions that you have to make, and, because it does impact your residents who are ratepayers. And taking a look at the master plan that was approved, I thought that was a pretty solid plan, that segregated, segregated industry and municipal waste, and how it would be treated and to deal with the loading on the plant. So I think that, my question is, why was there a departure? Because what I'm hearing now, it's, the, the project that's being proposed is just to address the cease and desist order from twenty fourteen. And I'm not comfortable that that is looking forward to the future of what, what the plant will have to do to perform and meet regulations. So I heard that there are some discussions with the regional board. I think that's, that's good and healthy, so that they're comfortable with, with what the city is committing itself to, that the city is comfortable that what they're committing to will satisfy the regional board's need to protect the environment. And I'm here to help and be a resource. I am a consultant, but I'm not looking for work. I'm, I'm just a concerned citizen and a ratepayer. And I've, I've been down this road many times, and I, I speak the language. And, and I'm here as a resource to staff and consultants as well, so, and, and council members, so. Please reach out to me and let's do it right. I, I don't think there's a, there's a need to rush to judgment on anybody's part, even mine, because I'm just new to it. So I want to learn more about what the approach is. And, but I, I do feel that that master plan was on the right track. And if that's what council approved at the time, it should be part of the discussion of where you're going in the future, so. Thank you.
May I have your name again, please?
Robert Granberg.
Granberg?
Granberg, G-R-A-N-B-E-R-G.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
It was mentioned that there are meetings with the industries. Do you have meeting minutes for those meetings?
No, those are not, those weren't recorded meetings.
At staff level, right?
Yeah.
You might want to keep minutes, so that if there are any commitments, you can hold them to that, so.
Anybody else in the room or online that would like to speak to this topic? All right. Yeah, please?
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, I had my, I had my hand raised. This is Karen Morgan. I live at seventeen forty-three Columbar Court. I'm also in the industry, and I don't want to get into the politicalness of anything. I just want to offer myself as a resource. So you're more than welcome to contact me, and I'd be happy to help look at plans, look at future, look at growth, and just be there for you. Because I lived here too for the last seventeen years, and I don't plan on leaving.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Justin, so if, if we
Public comment closed? Yes, public comment is closed at this point, sorry, thank you.
If we gave you six months on this, would we have clarity so that we would have actual answers for everyone in the community?
I can give you a guarantee, but I can guarantee you, within six months, we are going to be a lot further along than we are now with more answers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, the alternate two B plan, that was the sixteen point three, and now we're at the forty, and you said that that's because we're building the best plant that we possibly can. Have we, have we moved far from that plan two B? Or are we still on that same path? Or have we deviated? Have we added?
I mean, until we get more information from the state, we're still in that plan, the two B plan.
The two B? Okay. So that is the same plan as proposed?
Not ex, I mean, there's modifications to it, but in general, yes.
All right, this was just a discussion, so I don't necessarily need any movement or action by us. Do we have consensus?
Are there any direction?
I, I mean, my thoughts are that we stay the course. It's like we're on the ten-yard line and we're just going to slide.
I'd like to give a little more time so I can get some more clarity on this, myself. So I think give it a little more time to figure it out.
I just, clarification, we need a hundred percent design for industry to take it back to corporate for them to commit? Is that the case?
I don't know if that's exactly the case or not. I hate to answer that, if that's the case or not. We need to have a hundred percent design for the state to be able to prove something.
Okay. And what do you think, or what needs to be done for Kraft to go back to corporate to figure out whether or not that they?
For us to finish that design that we're comfortable with, that we can put a number to that design to present to industries.
And that's after approval from state?
No, that's not, that wouldn't be after approval from state. We would go to industries first. This is where we're at, this is what we're looking at. The process of the state could take longer, so we will, we will present that to them to get their approval. But that's what we'll be going to the, the industries with.
And we're at ninety. So what's the timeline in being able to go to industries for them to present that, to see what that they, they can bring to the table?
Hopefully here in the next six months.
Within six months?
Yeah, that's the hope, yes.
Okay.
In closing, I would just like to say that in twenty-one years as a construction manager, this is the first time ever that I've come, I've not identified a funding source before completing a design.
Can I just request that at one of these meetings with Kraft, that you ask them specifically what is needed for them to go to their corporate?
They need, they need a number.
They need a number, and you need a hundred to get to the number.
To get an approval, yes.
Can I make a request, Justin?
Of course.
Whatever that number is, add a contingency and add an escalator, because construction is going up every single month.
Correct.
And we may do all of this, and the, the state may review it, may take three, four months to review it. And, I mean, then we're also running up against the code cycle, and so
All that is being
There's, there's many, many, many things that we need to think about.
I would assume there'll be a percentage discussion with them, and obviously they'll understand there's escalation that's going to happen in cost. It's going to have to happen. The current number is this, obviously, depending on economy, it'll go up, it won't go down.
Right.
Never does, it seems. All right, are we good, that, move to number eight?
As long as we're using ARPA funds, let's continue, or my opinion is, we continue going forward to get that cost so that at that point you can, we can see what the industries have. But if we ever have to tap into our own funds, I'd like it if it would come back here just to update us on that situation.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes, for sure.
Definitely.
All right, item number eight. This was brought, me and Eric Sogo discussed the office hours. Staff?
Yes, this item was asked to be put on the agenda for this meeting. Some mayor may not be aware, City Hall is on a nine-eighties schedule. So we are closed, our offices here at City Hall are closed every Friday. And then our normal business hours are Monday through Thursday, eight AM to five PM. So I believe it was Mayor Protem Hagan wanted to discuss this item. I wasn't able to go far back to find out when exactly we did this schedule, because it's probably been in effect, I want to say since maybe two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. It originally started as closed, I believe, every other Friday. But we were running into hiccups with lack of staffing or people coming into the office, and then the person that would be responsible for that task not being available. And so previous administration had moved it to closed every Friday to address that issue, but also have us fully staffed on the Monday through Thursday. This has been something that our surrounding cities do. There's eight or nine other cities around us that are also closed on the Friday, including Riverbank, Oakdale, and Ripon. It is an incentive to staff. It is a benefit that our staff appreciates and really does like, because it is their catch-up day. They have prioritized items that they can do, or they, where they can leave their desk, not answer phones, not have to take counter calls, and handle those things. So any type of filings, catch-up on paperwork, finishing out reports that, that maybe they struggle with to get done, when they're constantly being interrupted, tasks that, that require them to be able to give their full attention to usually get moved to that Friday. We've also been incorporating our staff meetings. In the past, we haven't been able to have staff meetings without somebody having to sit out of those meetings, because the office is open during business hours. And so we have moved all of our staff meetings, which we have a front office meeting, and then we have a department meeting, so two staff meetings a month, where we're able to have everybody in attendance for those meetings. I mean, just overall, it's, it's just been something that our, our staff really does enjoy. And so, I wanted to talk about that.
And also keep in mind, public works and police are twenty-four seven here. We're on closed rally on some Friday, so we're always available if really anything comes down to it if needed. So just be mindful of that as well.
What are the hours of, that staff is here on Fridays?
So they're here every other Friday. So the Friday that they are in the office, it is seven to four. And so they do prioritize calls. If somebody's calling in and they need, they check phone calls, they check emails. They still keep in, in tune with items that are coming into the office, phone calls, voicemails, those type of things. And if somebody needs immediate assistance, or it's a very time-sensitive item, they'll give the person back, a call back and/or have them come in to deal with anything. They also honor appointments as well. So if somebody were to call in in that week and identify that they're unable to make it in these days, but can come in on a Friday, if it is the Friday that the staff is here, we could schedule that and have them come in on that Friday to have that taken care of. And we just give them a date, you know, a time period, and, and then staff will set an alarm to wait for them to show up.
How are we accommodating the nine-eighties if we're only working seven to four every other Friday?
It's just that on the Friday that they're here, the rest of the time, they're seven to five. So seven, seven AM to five PM, Monday through Thursday, so they come in the hour early before City Hall opens.
It's ten hours, right? So that's, there's a, it's a paid lunch?
Correct.
It's an unpaid lunch?
Yeah, it's a paid lunch with nine.
Okay, so the nine-eighties, I mean typically that's can you just break that down for me?
Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM with a one-hour lunch.
So it's nine.
And then they have the one Friday that they're off, which would tally eight hours. And then they have the one Friday that they're here, that they come in at the seven AM, but then they leave at the, at four.
And there's eight, eight hours.
You have eight nines and an eight.
Thank you.
And so a lot of the stuff that we also work on on the Fridays off is catching up on recreation. And so if people are calling regarding recreation items, like coaches needing to come in for equipment and other items related to that, our staff that handles recreation, if they're in the office, is also working on that as well. So a lot of stuff does happen on the Friday that they're here, even though the office is closed. But then there is the Friday that everybody's off, because in the past, when we've tried to work that out, it, it, it wasn't, it wasn't working out, because somebody would always come in looking for somebody that wasn't there that day. And so
If someone was to randomly come in to drop off a check or deposit or something like that, what recourse do they have?
So we have a drop box out front. As long as they have it in the envelope, if it's a check, they could put it in our drop box. That's where a lot of people do after hours. Like when I work late, I see a lot of people come here after five, and they, they stop up front. There's the green box out front, and they stick it in the drop box.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, when you, when you brought this issue up, have you heard some complaints from?
Well, I'd, I'd heard, yeah, multiple, multiple complaints from citizens and, and, you know, wanting to have some ability to come into the office on a Friday. So that's why I brought it up for discussion, to kind of figure out, you know, what the justification was, why we're closed, you know, that kind of thing. Because obviously, you know, citizens being able to get into the office isn't important if they're dealing with some issue in, in town. So that's, that was the main justification for it, was making sure that when you hear multiple complaints, that you, I guess, bring it out to the public forum to have a conversation about it.
Yeah, something. We're all work together. Sometimes I see people outside on a Friday where they're closed, like the last Friday, somebody wanted to return. Sometimes I see people outside on a Friday where they're closed, like the last Friday, somebody wanted to return some equipment. I grabbed it, wired it in. So, we work together just to- to make sure if they need to deliver something. I've taken paper, you know, from other people and just bring it in, drop it up in the right box, stuff like that. So, we're looking, we're watching from across the street.
Thanks, Chief.
And- and Public Works is also still open, and so in the event that there is some type of emergency, water sewer-related, you know, if somebody either swings by the corp yard and/or calls the non-emergency dispatch number for the police department, they'll- they'll contact our- our Public Works Department on or off hours. If you have a report, we always have somebody on call, and then if they're-
Is that posted outside at all?
Um, I don't believe so, but we can have it posted. It's all- it's on our website as long as, um, on our website and then usually, I think our automatic phone tree will talk about a non-emergency dispatch as well, but we can put that out there more. Also, on the community development side, we accept appointments like indicated. And so, if somebody has something having to do with a project and/or community development and they're- they need to come in on a Friday, Jalen and myself and our other staff member for planning are usually always available to accommodate that. And so, I have a lot of my own staff on Fridays, because even though the office is closed, it provides better opportunity to serve the council and anybody else that needs to come in on those days. And so, Jalen and I are both here on the Friday, on every Friday, because that works with our schedule to be able to be here for you guys and- and anything else that comes up.
What does, uh, what does Rest of Council think?
I think it's things like with what they're doing, I think for the staff, productivity and efficiency. I like the concept of one day every two weeks where they're actually quiet hours, if you will, to sit down and focus on stuff. I know when I get interrupted at my position with I've got staff and whatnot, that it's an interruption. It takes time to get back on task, and if they're not interrupted at the counter all the time, then they can be more productive. I like that aspect of them having that Friday free to do that. I'm not sure how many folks out there are running across the Friday and they- they knock on the door and realize, oh, it's Friday, that's right, they're shut. I mean, maybe we do, maybe put a little more information on the door as far as hours and potential ideas of what they can do, but I'm not really in favor of changing the schedule per se. I- I don't know how many instances where there's that many emergencies for community that couldn't be handled on the next week or call and make an appointment for the next Friday, should that Friday be gone. If there's communication, it's not like we're turning people's waters off or anything like that that we do.
Yeah, we need to make sure the next one doesn't happen.
So, if something like that's going on, it's like, I knocked on the door on Friday, you weren't here, I wanted to take care of X, Y, and Z. They took the opportunity to make a phone call on Monday, I tried. Can I get on a Friday, it's my only day off on a work schedule, can you be there? We would accommodate that, it sounds like, so I think we have coverage there for those kind of situations.
Yeah, and, um, when I worked at other agencies that have also incorporated either a nine-eighty schedule or a four-ten schedule where you're having the every Friday off and working that ten hours, a lot of that comes into as well as giving them that day off to where, because they have that day off, you know, trying- trying their best to run any errands and/or schedule any appointments that they need to do as best as they can on- on their actual scheduled day off as opposed to, so they'd be more present in the office during the- during those work hours, Monday through Thursday. And so, that's another reason that cities, especially smaller ones, provide that flexibility or that type of incentive because it's also supposed to incentivize the city in the way that they would do all of their other items and maybe not miss as much work or take as much time off because they can do it on the Friday that they're off.
How does the council feel about not changing the nine-eighty schedule, but try opening up for the Friday that- that staff is here, considering just opening up Friday morning for residents and see what kind of foot traffic we get for a month? See if people actually show up, and if no one shows up, then that tells us the data that the- the large, the community at large knows that City Hall's closed on Fridays.
And that's another reason with the nine-eighty schedule, that Fridays are selected, is it usually is the slowest day of the week.
Sure.
That's why that- that day's also picked.
Uh, I- I definitely respect what you're saying, Dominique, but in the same way that our- our city staff plans around their appointments, I think we have to be respectful of the people that we serve as well.
Oh, of course, I'm just putting that out there, yeah.
And- and remain open for them. I too have received multiple concerns about not being open on Fridays, which is why I supported Pro Tem, uh, Pro Tem Mayor Hagan's request to put this up for discussion. I do want to ask a question to Chief and then to Justin. With them not being in the office on- on Fridays, do you see a benefit to having the office staffed and accessible on- on Fridays, the Friday that they're not here, as well as the Friday that they are- are here but the doors aren't open? Is there a benefit?
Selfishly, it's a benefit when they're not here because we're not getting called to do more things. To be honest.
Chief?
It really doesn't affect us. Like he said, we just focus on what we're gonna do over there and that's about it, so...
Usually if something is- is pressing, I- I usually find out about it in some way, shape, or form, and I'll- I'll reach out to Justin and/or Chief to have, make sure it's taken care of.
Since- since it's a discussion and- and we do have a Facebook page, would it be unreasonable to put the request out to the folks that we serve, to ask them, to see if we can get a little bit of input? Like, do- do a poll through Facebook or through a mailer or anything like that? Is that, is that reasonable?
What kind of foot traffic do we get on any given day, I guess would be my question? How many folks do we have in our community? Is there an average number of folks that come through our door on the Monday through Thursday? That anybody could have, that could give us that information? I'm just curious how much foot traffic we really have.
What'd you say?
As a resident for a fair portion of my life in this town, I came here when I bought my home and got set up for water and outside of these council meetings, I don't know if I've been into this building since. So, I'm- I'm just, I don't know if the foot traffic concern for most of our citizens. I'm just curious what our foot traffic is.
What was the suggestion by the public to Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Hagan and Councilmember Engel? Did they have a suggestion?
On my end, there was no suggestion or a question as to-
As to why, yeah.
They just wanted- they just wanted it open on Fridays, is that pretty much the-
And I mean, there are some things, and it makes me think, as far as our business license process, we've expedited that. And I'm assuming that that three-day turnaround is business day, so on that Friday, are we not accounting that for a business day?
Oh, we're still accounting it.
Or accounting that as a business day, okay, well, it achieves that, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I'd, oh, sorry, I think I'd be open, if everyone else is open, to just find out what the general public feels like. Maybe it's not a pressing issue, but I've had a few people ask me, you know, about it, as to why they're closed and not being able to drop off like, you know, basic checks, for example, that kind of thing. So, like I said, I was just bringing it to the public forum to kind of get a little more clarity on it.
So, basic consensus direction is to get some more feedback from the community, is that where we're going at here? As a council as a group, is that what we're thinking?
Yeah, I think I support at least partially that day where we are staffed to be close to the public. It sounds like staff is benefiting from being able to have their meetings without interruption, that kind of thing. So, at least partially, if we can kind of form that question, maybe an open till noon kind of thing, or just closed. If there's a benefit at all from it, then- then let's just let them work without interruption. I know I personally work a lot better without interruption and once a week or-
And that's- that's where it is, when you're up at the front counter, like, it's- it's different for staff that's in the back office. We're not in the- in that front counter in that everyday activity, but there are plenty of times throughout the day where we have, you know, multiple people at the counter and certain staff that you just don't see sitting every day because they're always at the counter, always taking a call. And so, there- there has been that emphasis where there's excitement towards the Friday because it's catching up on everything we weren't able to get to during the week. And being able to have that time, but- but not be stressed that- that you're leaving the counter, because that is a big thing. There's, we have four people up at that front counter, and so you're managing phones as well as multiple people coming in and- and still handling tasks. And so, when somebody leaves the counter, you know, and- and, you know, they're out and/or trying to work on something else, there's always that emphasis, when are they returning? Because it- it puts, it deepens the impact on everybody else that's at the counter, and so...
Respectfully, the fact that we're saying that Fridays are our least visited days to the counter and that we're there, it feels like we should be able to manage our time and our meetings and have a partial closure on those Fridays, like our meetings are from nine AM to twelve PM. And then we have open off and, uh, open office hours. As we're open anyway, it's the lightest foot traffic day, so that would imply that there's the least amount of interruption to people's work, hearing that it's- it's a minimal intrusion on the back office and a small intrusion on the front office. It's just not really competing with me.
Well, so after that, I'm- I'm very sure staff on my side, and Fridays is the only day where my staff can catch up with a lot of the work they weren't able to do during the week. I mean, that's the only day that she can really get caught up on the stuff that she needs to do. So, if you open Fridays, we're just gonna go further back on our work.
For your- your office is also closed on Fridays?
It is.
Okay. And then, so that-
It used to be closed.
That- that person's function is, can- can you just help me enlighten?
Person's function, she is- she is the records manager right now. She's in charge of sending reports to DA's office, she's in charge of sending data to the DOJ, data to, um, to the state, prepping citations, evidence, you name it, she does it everything right now.
Well, she sounds very busy.
She's very busy.
As far as her responsibilities to- to the desk or- or somebody that would coming in, be coming into the office, what would those responsibilities be?
Somebody comes to the office, Monday to- Monday to Thursday, there's a phone in the lobby. They pick it up, it rings straight to her, and she believes whatever she's doing to go help that person. But that doesn't change even on a Friday because we have the phone outside now, I think, I believe it's working, the phone. Outside the PD, they push the button, it goes straight to dispatch. They tell dispatch what they need, we go over there and help the person. So, even on a Friday, we still help people, even though the- the doors are closed, we're still available for the public.
So, is it very similar then to the door? It sounds like it's very similar from the doors being open to the doors being closed.
Mm-hmm.
So, essentially, it wouldn't change her- her workload much, except for the doors are open?
Yeah, if, I mean, if- if the doors are closed, she's allowed to do more stuff. Sometimes people don't want to push the button, they just, you know, they leave, or they want to talk to an officer, mainly not usually her, but more speak to an officer on a Friday.
Okay. And the difference now, they- they would just do it from the outside, they would just wait outside until an officer, somebody could come up front? She wouldn't be required to tend to the-
Yeah, sometimes it's not for her.
I'm sorry, I've only been in your office one time and that was to get a form.
Yeah, sometimes it's not for her, sometimes, a lot of, actually, a lot of times it's for an officer, they want to speak to an officer.
Okay.
Because we do, um, like, to release a property, we do appointments, so it's not like they can just pop in and say, I want my property, has to be an appointment. We do, um, like, the live scans by appointments also.
Okay.
Things like that, so we- we test everything during the week, Monday to Thursday, so that we're having that Friday for her to do whatever she needs to do to catch up.
Thank you.
Alright, so, we're looking for some feedback from the community. At this point, we have some folks in the audience here or online. What are your thoughts in the room or online, if you'd like to come to the podium or speak on this topic? Anybody? Got no takers in the room, anybody online, any takers? Alright, we'll go ahead and close public comment on this item then, bring it back. So, we're at the point, if I understand correctly, to do a little research, sending out some surveys and questions to see what our public currently thinks of the ideas, what their concern, what their concerns are in some form or another? Maybe on the monthly water bill as well? Now, on our monthly water bills, don't, we have our hours posted there, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's why I was just double checking, 'cause I can't remember if I've ever looked for that there.
Does the signage on the front doors say closed Fridays?
Believe so.
There is a sign out there, yes.
This department used to be on, it was closed at all times, but when we modified the schedule, we matched them. It used to be where you would come to the police department, the doors would be locked. They'd walk over here and somebody from here would escort them over to PD. But since we moved into this schedule, we opened up the police department and have them honor the same schedule as- as City Hall.
We got enough direction on that then, I think, at this point? Alright, let's go ahead and move to Council Communications and any, excuse me, any potential future agenda items. Councilman Strowman, we'll start with you tonight.
Just want to thank the council for their engaged discussion, especially regarding wastewater treatment plant. Ever said I had all the options, but these are topics that we think we need to have very frank, open, candid conversations about. And, um, so, Justin and Tom, and the lady from Blackwater, thanks for all of your hard work thus far. Just bring it home.
Thank you. Councilman Engel?
Uh, first, I just want to thank the council for what, in my opinion, is that was an expedited meeting. Hour and forty-five minutes, I don't know when we have done that, at least since I've been on board. And just saying that, I just want to express that it's my belief that the majority of the meetings that we have could be done in this fashion and in this timeframe. But for whatever reason, we as the council extend these meetings out much longer than necessary.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Walker?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to second Councilman Strowman. I thought that was a great conversation that we had, clarifying our expectations with the wastewater treatment plant moving forward. I'm hoping by April, we do have that number and we're able to go to industries to make sure that we do have this solidified so that our, the burden isn't carried by our community members. And just keep in mind, we do have another project coming up, the surface water project, where we will be carrying the burden on that one, it seems, unless we can get some grant money for that. So, I think it was a good conversation. I hope we're, I mean, we'll continue to look for grant opportunities as well to fund both of those projects. And just keep in mind, moving forward, we need to provide for our citizens both wastewater and surface water to keep our citizens healthy and take care of, take care of our city. So, thank you guys, and I think that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Hagan?
Just look forward to checking out the new field coming up here for homecoming. Good luck to the Cougars. Other than that, I don't have much to add tonight.
Thank you, I'll keep it brief as well. I second the comments on the brevity of the meeting tonight, that's great. We're gonna be out of here before nine. It's a new record, I think, for a while now, if not the record. Secondarily, yes, go Cougars for homecoming. I'm gonna say get there early because that place is gonna be packed. Good luck, everybody, to find your seats, I hope you can make it. Lastly, the American Legion's Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, the eleventh, so it was a good turnout there. Also, they do have their barbecue after that at the community center. Twelve bucks a head, you can get chicken or ribs, it's usually a good meal, good reason to be out there. I believe last year they had the local bands out there performing some military songs for everybody. They did a great job, hopefully they'll do that again this year, so looking for the support from everybody on that as well. And with that, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, thank you.